Well, good evening and welcome to this forum for the Stevens Point Alder candidates sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Stevens Point area, the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point Student Government Association, the Stevens Point area Senior High School Student Senate, and the Portage County Business Council. My name is Sue Buck and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Stevens Point area and I will serve as the moderator for this event. The League of Women Voters is a political but nonpartisan organization. The League's primary purpose is to encourage voting by registering voters, providing voter information, and advocating for voting rights. Tonight's event is part of providing voter information through candidates sharing their views of issues of concern to Stevens Point residents. The co-sponsors of this forum, the UWSP Student Government Association, the Portage County Business Council, and the Spash Student Senate are also nonpartisan organizations with no endorsement of candidates or political parties. Their interest is in helping local citizens to be more informed voters. Historically part of the Menominee homelands, a three-mile strip along the Wisconsin River was ceded to the United States in an 1836 treaty. Stevens Point first was established as an unincorporated village in 1847. In 1858, the area became known as the City of Stevens Point. The population of Stevens Point is estimated at 27,740 people in 2024. It covers 18.4 square miles and the budget for 2024 for the city of Stevens Point is There are four active TIF, Tax Incremental Finance Districts, in the city of Stevens Point. Stevens Point has a mayor and city council form of government. There are 11 Aldermatic districts representing 33 wards. Alders are elected to serve a two-year term. Even-numbered districts are elected in even-numbered years. The council meets the third Monday evening of every month. The Stevens Point Alders are compensated at an annual rate of $5,720 according to the 2024 city budget. The council is the legislative branch of the city government. Council sets the policy direction and priorities of the city by establishing ordinances, laws, passing declaratory resolutions, and considering denying or approving motions at city meetings. The council is responsible for setting the city budget, overseeing all city properties, and providing services for the health, safety, and well-being of the public. As well, it is responsible for setting tax rates and assessing fees to meet operational and contingency needs of the city. The council also approves economic development projects and financing for capital expenditures. There are eight candidates running for the contested seats of four of the Aldermatic districts. The candidates are Jackie Guthrie and Craig Tesh for District 2, Jason Barrett and Dale Steinmetz for District 6, Chris Donahue and Dean Shuda for District 8, and Dustin Boozy and Robert Larson for District 10. All candidates were invited to participate in this forum. Joining us tonight are Dustin Boozy, Jackie Guthrie, Dale Steinmetz, and Craig Tesh. Jason Barrett, Chris Donahue, Robert Larson, and Dean Shuda are not available to attend. So unfortunately, we do not have a candidate present running for the District 8 seat. To provide the most time to hear from the candidates and to provide a fair and equal opportunity to answer questions important to you and this community, I will review the format, time, and terms of this format. This has also been reviewed with the candidates. Each candidate will first have a minute and a half to introduce themselves and make an opening statement. They will have a minute and a half to respond to questions, and they will also have a minute and a half to make a closing statement. And I will repeat a question if necessary. Candidates will respond first to some questions submitted by the forum sponsors and then questions from the audience. Questions from the audience must be addressed to all the candidates. If you want to submit a question, please motion to one of the ushers. We have one on each side with cards and pencils, and you can use those to write a question. The League reserves the right to review and screen questions for relevance and to avoid duplication. Timers are in front of the candidate tables. A green folder will be held up when their time starts. A yellow folder indicates 30 seconds remain, and the red folder means the time has expired. Candidates may finish their sentence and then please stop so the next candidate may begin their response. Candidates are asked to keep their remarks germane to the questions and fair to the participants. Audience members are requested to respect the candidates' time and responses, and we also ask you to turn off your noise-making devices. The moderator reserves the right to interrupt to ensure that these ground rules are observed. The order of each question will be rotated. We will alternate which candidate answers the question first. The order of the opening and closing statements will be chosen by random drawing of the candidates' names. As I've already stated, participating in tonight's forum are Craig Tesh, Dale Steinmetz, Jackie Guthrie, and Dustin Boozy. And we will now begin with the opening statement from each candidate. And our first statement will be by Dustin Boozy.
Hello. Hi, everyone. My name is Dustin Boozy. I'm running for city council in District 10. I am here to advocate for policies that benefit all residents and the broader community. I have a background in working in laboratory science and while it's a... Sorry. Where results and accuracy can be the difference between life and death. It's taught me the value that comes from listening, interpreting, and relaying actionable information, all which I find to be applicable in public service. Being a father of two young children keeps me busy with many parks and outdoor spaces, businesses, and events we love to explore. It's allowed me to slow down and see the world through their eyes. It forces me to see the way conflict and differences in viewpoint can manifest into deeper issues. It's given me patience and the emotional capacity to look outside myself and view the needs of others. It's with this toolkit that I hope to contribute new ideas to build Stevens Point into an even better community for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Craig Tesh.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Craig Tesh and I'm running for alder in the 2nd district. I was in the Marine Corps for three and a half years, and then I went to UW-Whitewater. I majored in accounting and finance with an emphasis on computers. I moved here 48 years ago. And I first worked at Sentry for 11 years, and then I ran my own business doing taxes and financial planning as a CPA and Certified Financial Planner for 33. 13 years ago, I started going to council meetings. And the biggest thing I noticed there is that the people that were going before the council were basically being ignored. There seemed to be a disconnect between the people that are, you know, going to talk to the council and the council itself. And that has to change because you can't have a better community if you don't work with the people that live here. And that's what I hope to effect. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next statement is Jackie Guthrie.
Good evening, folks. I want to thank the facilitators of tonight's event for putting time and resources towards connecting candidates with our voters in the community. I really appreciate your resources and efforts. My name is Jackie Guthrie. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm running for city council in District 2, which is immediately east of UW-Stevens Point, the mostly residential neighborhood that encompasses Gurkey Park. I studied government in college and work in middle management now at this university in a position that includes program, personnel, and budget oversight. I have always felt called to serve my community, including volunteering in hospice centers and more recently in refugee resettlement in our community. When David Shore said that he wanted to wrap down his work as alder after about a decade of service, I thought the position was a great way to continue serving locally while also leveraging those administrative skills that I bring to bear. I am a progressive. I want to sustain this vibrant, inclusive, thriving community for generations to come. Of particular interest to me are diversifying and densifying our housing stock within walking distance of key amenities, investing in an attractive downtown and world-class recreational infrastructure, and preparing both infrastructure and city finances for the climate that is coming. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Dale Steinmetz.
Hi, my name is Dale Steinmetz. I'm running for alder in District 6. I'm new to public office, but I'm not new to the area. Stevens Point is my home. I grew up here from Bannock Elementary School all the way through PJ Jacobs, then senior high at Spash. I went to UW-Oshkosh for college where I majored in economics, tutored economics, was president of the Economic Student Association, a little bit wonky like that. But I came back here and I'm working at Delta Dental, and I figured Dave Placence, our current alder for District 6, isn't seeking reelection. But he was willing to show me the ropes and along with the support of many other amazing people, I am running for alder to bring transparency. And I want to make sure that the residents of District 6 have a say in the development of the city, whether it's in their backyard, in the immediate vicinity of District 6, or outside, like downtown. There's a lot of exciting opportunities on the horizon for Stevens Point, and I want to make sure that I can bring my skills and the voices and critical insights of the residents of District 6 to these exciting opportunities.
Okay, thank you. And we will start with our questions. And our first question, we're going to start with Craig Tesh and then we'll do a rotation. So, Mr. Tesh, what are there? Are there specific issues within your district that motivated you to run for common council?
Thank you. Very good question. I spent the last two months walking around District 2 campaigning, talking to people, gathering their concerns. The primary concern was taxes, the increase in taxes, especially for people that are on fixed income. Also, another thing that was, that came up was Stanley Street. Stanley Street, they felt as though the people there felt they had even had a referendum that they tried to put through, and they tried to talk to the council. And it seems like, again, there was a disconnect between the council and the people that lived there. There are local issues that I've found, and that is, one of them is the people that live by Gurkey Park. The noise emulating from Gurkey Park at times can be very noisy and very disturbing for them, and that's something else I want to look into.
Okay, thank you. We will then go to Dustin Boozy.
Yeah, so I've been in the district now for four years, lifelong Wisconsin resident, but been Stevens Point, on Dan's Drive for the last four years. And really getting out and meeting immediate neighbors and now the extended district. We are located just to the west of McDill Pond on the south end of town. And McDill Pond dominates a lot of conversations. It's an attraction. It's right in our backyards, and it needs upkeep. It needs maintenance. It's a public pond, a public area. We need to work with the city and the Lake Association to really make it a usable and attractive area for the city in general. Another issue that consistently comes up is transportation, infrastructure in the area. If everyone's familiar, we have Business 51 that runs through the district. Much of that is planned and really, really taking place in a manner that's already been spoken for. But it's a conversation that continues to take place and happen, and so my goal is to really bring transparency on those conversations when I encounter folks that have questions, and I can be a resource directly to city officials on that planning.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Guthrie.
Would you please repeat the question?
Sure. I'd be glad to. Are there specific issues within your district that motivated you to run for common council?
Thank you. So I'll share that I don't have a particular axe to grind. I feel called to serve and capable in terms of resources and education, background, and time to provide service to both my immediate neighborhood and the city as a whole. When I was knocking on doors over the last few months, I found that most residents were really happy with the direction that the city was going in and how our neighborhood was. Their experience of living in our neighborhood was very positive. There were a few folks who talked to me about a particular crossing and how safe it was, or slowing traffic on a particular street, or better communication from the city when things were changing or why things were changing. And so I've got some ideas for how to address that in partnership with directors of different city units and through perhaps working to leverage some resources to do better public relations and more proactive communication from the city center. But no, there wasn't a particular concern that I have, and I'm so glad that my neighbors are relatively happy. I'm happy living in this community, and I look forward to nudging it and just furthering that continued vibrancy of our community and tweaking things on the edges to make sure that they can continue to live here and thrive here and be satisfied.
Okay, thank you. And Dale Steinmetz.
There is a specific issue facing District 6 that motivated me to run. It's the parcel of land at the intersection of Old Highway 18 and Brilouski, and the talks of putting a Public Works building there, directly neighboring two residential neighborhoods. This is something that the residents of those neighborhoods have said in very certain terms they do not want. It is not well-suited for that. It's not a perfectly perpendicular intersection. There's kids growing up there, and the industrial park is maybe a mile away where the city transit center at the District 6 voting place already is. It would make more sense to put that sort of facility in that area. So I, in my mission of representing the voices of District 6, I would be opposed to putting that particular facility at that particular location. I have heard throughout the course of knocking on hundreds and hundreds of doors, issues regarding speed on Leahy or speed in other neighborhoods where there's also children growing up, or the intersection on Industrial Parkway and Hoover, turning left onto that bridge, not a lot of sight there. And that wasn't on my radar as someone who doesn't live in that particular area of District 6. So I look to be a conduit for the residents of that area to city council, and I want to affect change that they desire.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start the next question with Dustin Boozy. Affordable housing seems to be an ongoing issue, not only in our community but nationwide. Would you support a whole-community approach to encourage comprehensive, affordable housing in our city, and what might be some steps that could be taken to address this problem?
Yeah, you know, it feels like it's kind of been bubbling up now for some time. And while I don't claim to be an expert in housing, I don't have the background, it's something, though, that consistently comes up, not so much in my district but in conversations with city planning. What my hope is, is to lean on the experts, to get opinions of folks that I trust, of folks that are in the know, because it is something that we consistently need to address more, that's more so that's been kind of happening as it's been going. So my approach to it will be to, again, kind of lean on folks that are in the know, take approaches that are proven, take approaches that have had effects, look to find similar areas or similar towns that have addressed this problem or are currently addressing this problem, and not try to reinvent the wheel. I'm not here to push through objectives of my own. I'm here to be a conduit, hear from my constituents, and take the best approach for everyone involved.
Thank you. And Jackie Guthrie.
I'm so glad that we're talking about housing tonight. We do not have enough housing in our community to support all of our residents' needs. If elected, I would advocate for densifying and diversifying our housing within walking distance of key amenities. By more diverse housing, I mean condos, senior living facilities, cooperative housing. Certainly, affordable housing by federal definition is a component of that solution, but that's not the only thing we need. We also need young family housing. We need senior family housing. We need housing for all different steps in life's journey, and we do not have enough of it. So if elected, I would work shoulder to shoulder with the directors of our city units that are involved in this fight to use all tools and incentives to increase our housing stock. I would also work to disincentivize sprawl into the rural areas outside of downtown and the current city borders. Running utilities and services out to those far-away communities is expensive for all of us, not just for the people that live out there. And given the climate that is coming and given the diminishing state funds for municipalities, I worry about how we will afford those community residential neighborhoods in 20 or 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale Steinmetz.
We do need more innovative solutions when it comes to housing. It's tough right now when you look at the historical rates of wage growth versus housing prices. It seems like homeownership as a young person is becoming more and more unattainable. So whether that be more apartment buildings or condos, more opportunities for young people to build equity in this asset that is so many people's, their largest asset, their nest egg, rather than just having rent in an apartment as the only option. It's necessary that we engage in more creative ideas. I'm not an industry expert, but my criteria in evaluating these sorts of solutions would be, what are the impacts on the tax base? What's the impact to the people that live there? And does it make sense in the long term?
Okay, thank you. And Craig Tesh.
Yes, this was another one of the issues that came to light for me when I was talking to people in the district, especially people that are renting. Affordable housing. You know, you're talking about just five years ago or so, they had a increase in appraised value, and now they have another one. They have to have that in relationship to the state. The state requires whenever the property value gets a certain amount out of sync that you have to have that reappraisal. And it's a shame because most of them are younger folks. They're starting out. They've just gotten out of college, or they're just out of high school and they've got a job. But it's very difficult for them to do it. I really, at this point, the only thing I can say is that right now there's more demand than there's supply, and I think at some point we have to have that so that there's more supply and potentially too that the, maybe the interest rate would come down to some extent so that we could also, they could also afford the payments that they have to make every month.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we're going to start with Jackie Guthrie. And this is going to be, it's both an audience question and a forum sponsor's question, so I'm going to kind of mesh them together. We still hear of the pros and cons concerning efforts to initiate road diets in Stevens Point. What is your position on expanding or not expanding them in the city? In other words, what is your stance on Business 51, four lanes or two lanes?
I anticipated this question this evening. When I moved into Stevens Point about five years ago, I heard that there had been such a big to-do about Stanley Street being reconstructed, and I started to attend city council meetings and started to get to know the talking points related to Business 51 or what students in the audience might know as Division Street in an area related to campus. I'll say that I am not an urban planner and I am not a civil engineer, but I understand that the people who do have advanced degrees in those fields have studied how to produce safe, vibrant, successful streets that keep our small businesses looking attractive and keep pedestrians crossing streets safely. And whether it is Business 51 or any other development in the community, I will honor those recommendations and review those data to try to make sure that we utilize those guidelines in any redevelopment that we do.
Okay, thank you. And Dale Steinmetz.
Data is going to be critical when it comes to the evaluation of Business 51 or Division Street. Safety should be paramount, and looking at the cost to maintain or implement these changes and the impacts that it will have to the tax base, the functionality of the roads, those are going to be critical. So running studies and actually adhering to the results of those studies rather than paying for studies and then going off of gut or intuition feelings is going to be important. As mentioned by some other folks, I am not a infrastructure specialist. I don't feel comfortable making those judgments just based off my personal usage of Business 51 and Division Street. But it is a change that we are going to need to face. It needs to become an issue that we put in the past rather than constantly having this at kind of the forefront of the issues that we're facing.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Tesh, Craig Tesh, same question.
Yes, this is the reason that I first started going to council meetings 13 years ago. I had just, what I used to do was I used to purchase, started off because I needed extra money for my daughter for surgery over at Mayo Clinic. So I started for properties in distress. I used to fix them up, and then I would basically either rent them out or I would sell them. And I have a property on Church Street, and it was the old Canadian Animal Hospital that I reconverted. And what happened there is that they came in right after that with the two lanes. And the problem with the two lanes in a business district with bicycle lanes is that I was concerned, first of all, most of the people I talked to, they do not want to have, they never go on business areas where there is a lot of traffic. And what I proposed to the council is, I proposed them to have a 4-3-4 because, four on both of the business areas and then three in the middle because the people that I heard that were talking about there, they want to have a little bit more of a barrier between the road and where they walk so that they don't have the traffic zooming by them.
Thank you. And Dustin Boozy.
Yes, so I brought up Business 51 in my opening remarks. It is an ever-present issue in the district, and it is something that will continue to be just revolving around conversations. What I do understand is that there is a plan in place. There's a plan that we are moving forward with, and it's one that I do believe has come to a conclusion for that respect. What I'd like to do is continue to support the experts and the studies that have found the safety in this plan, because what I'm primarily interested in is keeping people safe within the district. When I personally go near the roadway, utilize the roadway, I don't find it to be a safe place for me or my children to be at in its present condition. That's what I know about it, but what I'm looking forward to is helping to improve the plan that's in place, to provide feedback from constituents, and to put forward what will be the most safe plan moving forward.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we will start with Dale Steinmetz. Last August, the Stevens Point Business Improvement District was accepted into the Main Street Program of the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. How do you envision the development of the city's downtown? Is the Main Street Program helpful in moving our city's downtown development forward, and in what ways?
Could you please repeat the question?
Sure can. Last August, the Stevens Point Business Improvement District was accepted into the Main Street Program of the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. How do you envision the development of the city's downtown? you envision the development of the city's downtown? Is the Main Street Program helpful in moving our city's downtown development forward, and so in what ways?"
The development that is on the horizon for downtown is really exciting. We have so much space right at the heart of downtown with that Shopko building that we can do so much with. We could look at options where we put new buildings up, mixed-use spaces, whether it's retail and residential combination. But my vision for downtown is something that has spaces for all ages, something that fosters community and bolsters the economy, so that it matches the desires of the people that live here, like I said in my opening remarks. It's very important. My personal utopia of Stevens Point would have a pickleball court on every corner. But that's not what the residents of District 6 want. So that's not what I'm going to push for. I'm going to be open and listen to what they have to say, relay their input, use that to form critical questions. And I am deeply, deeply excited about the opportunities that downtown presents, especially as a young person. It's a fun place to hang out in the day and the night, whether it's the library or somewhere else downtown. There's a lot of opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And next will be Mr. Tesh.
Yes, I went to the meeting that they had, and downtown. And my concerns going in were, of course, were, first of all, is this the optimal way of doing it? Second of all, I wondered, would it be positive as far as the downtown businesses were concerned? Because, you know, right now, the businesses are not doing just the best down there, and I'd like to see something positive for them. Will the project be entirely covered by the tax incremental financing, the TIF, and not be something that is going to be picked up in any part, in any great part, or any great measure by the taxpayer? And last, will it be a sustainable type of improvement? And I'm talking about that in relationship to what we had before, which was the mall. My vision actually for a nice downtown would be actually have some kind of a no-traffic, if we could just find a place where there was parking, and we could have someplace where just people could just go down there and just enjoy the downtown. I think that would make a measurable difference as far as downtown is concerned.
Okay, thank you. Dustin Boosie.
I think my vision for downtown, I'm excited about the possibility. What I'd like to see is buy-in from folks across the city to drive people downtown, and not necessarily even drive downtown. I like, once you get down there, you feel like you can walk to different areas. You feel like, you know, everything's kind of within arms' reach. I think that's something we could strive for citywide a little bit more, but downtown gives that feeling already, and I'd like to continue that aspect by bringing things closer together, having things be all ages. We love the library. We're down there almost monthly, and it's a great resource. I think it needs to be promoted, talked about, a focal point. And I think you can make focal points within walking distance, within that area. I really am excited about what downtown could be, not only to attract, you know, tourism, but also to attract people that will get into Stevens Point and then want to stay longer.
Okay, thank you. And Jackie Guthrie.
Could you please repeat the question?
I sure can.
Thank you.
"Last August, the Stevens Point Business Improvement District was accepted into the Main Street Program of the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. How do you envision the development of the city's downtown? Is the Main Street Program helpful in moving our city's downtown development forward, and if so, in what ways?"
Yeah, I'll say that the Business Improvement District seems like a great vehicle for envisioning a vibrant, sustainable hub in our community. Mark Christiansen, who's here tonight, Chloe Kaiser, and other city staff have already been just shooting out of the gate and working with a lot of synergy to pull the right people together, small business owners, philanthropists in our community, not-for-profits, to work together to envision what our downtown can look like. And I love where those conversations are heading. Amplifying the already successful events that we have downtown and near downtown. Think about the Riverfront in the summer, right? A place I and mine love to go. Sustainable infrastructure, making sure that we're building for the climate of the future, so that we are not rocked by something that harms both community members and our infrastructure and is expensive for us to rebuild. And I'll say it again, lots of housing, so that folks can walk to these great events and great small restaurants and other things that draw them to downtown. A density of vibrancy downtown is what I envision. I think that's the direction we're heading in.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start with Craig Tesh, and it's an audience question. "Do you support the proposed referendum to fund the expansion of the firefighting force? Why or why not?"
I'm sorry, would you say that again, please?
Yes, I will. "Do you support the proposed referendum to fund the expansion of the firefighting force? Why or why not?"
I think that as the city has grown, I think that we have to grow with it as far as any fire, police, anything else is concerned. And so I would be in favor of any increases. These are very important jobs, I feel. They are your first responders, and I think that anytime that we can help first responders in any way, because they're our protectors. That's what protects this community. And I would definitely be for it. You know, that's something that is worth spending taxpayers' money on, and I think most taxpayers would agree with that.
Okay, thank you. Dustin Boosie.
I would be for the referendum. I think if we want to be honest and talk about increasing housing, increasing the amount of people we have in Stevens Point, we have to be honest about what we need in order to support that. From my understanding, the firefighters, the current capacity is even below the standard of what is considered what firefighter standards are. And so I think we need to be able to bring that up to an acceptable level, if not surpass that level, and then continue to address other issues that we are facing. I find that, I can echo what Craig said too. You know, taxpaying is something we all do, and I feel like in the conversations that I've had, that's something that's supported fairly broadly in my district.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Guthrie.
This is a sensitive topic. We're being asked to, by referendum, pay more taxes. We just got our housing bills. For those of us who own a house, our taxes went up. The school district is going to referendum for operational costs. Our firefighters need more staff in order to not even meet the federal standards for our community ourselves. Why is this all happening? It's because of diminished revenue sharing with municipalities at the state legislative level. So it's harmful to our community that we're not getting those monies back, that all of you are paying in taxes. Yes, I support this referendum. And yes, I say that with a heavy sense, because I know that we're asking more and more and more of our residents. I met with the firefighter union the other day. They explained some of the numbers around what they would get with this referendum. And again, it doesn't even bring us to safe federal standards in our community, which we should have, right? And so, yes, I would support this referendum, and yes, I would stand there with my residents and help them feel their feelings and express themselves as they're stressing about the money and the taxes that they're being asked over and over and over again to spend. I would also finally get involved with lobbying our state using the League of Municipalities to advocate for change to that revenue-sharing formula. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Dale Steinmetz.
Public servants like firefighters and police are one of the greatest insurance policies a community can buy. We need to invest in our firefighters, because the pace of their, they have not grown proportionally with our city. We need more support on the east side and more generally, just to get closer to those federal standards that were mentioned. So I would support that referendum. I think that the overworking of the current staff, relying on overtime hours, those sorts of things, it's not healthy, it's not sustainable. We need to make sure that the firefighters we don't, or the firefighters we have right now, don't burn out. And we need to make sure that that community has the resources that are required to execute their jobs successfully, and more importantly, safely.
Okay, thank you. And we'll start this next round with Dustin Boosie. And this is an audience question. "Retiring U.S. Climate Envoy John Kerry recently said this about the climate crisis. It is the test of our times. It is about survival. If you are elected, what would you do to promote transportation, infrastructure, and housing projects that address this looming issue? And what ideas would you have for Stevens Point that recognizes this reality and works toward a livable future for future generations?"
Could I have you repeat that?
I can. And I will just, I'll ask, just the question part. "If you are elected, what would you do to promote transportation, infrastructure, and housing projects that address this looming issue of climate crisis? And what ideas would you have for Stevens Point that recognizes this reality and works toward a livable future for future generations?"
Yeah, I think this question is so apt, coming off of, you know, climate is longer than weather. We all experienced this last winter, and we're all experiencing what the spring is now. To deny it as being anything else, I think is outside the question. What I would do to support this, and what I think we're working towards now, is bringing solutions closer together, making things walkable, making infrastructure that has multipurpose, that works for everyone. Not only infrastructure, but housing. We need a radical change in how we think about housing. What we're going on, the path we're on now, we've seen, I believe we've seen, isn't sustainable. So we need ideas, and we need to be open to listening to ideas. Again, as someone without a background in this, I find that, you know, there are lots of resources out there, and I hope to be a conduit, again, to listen to constituents, hear their concerns, and also provide that feedback to experts who are also in my ear as well.
Okay, thank you. Jackie Guthrie.
Can you please repeat the question part of the question?
Yep, I sure can.
Thank you.
"If you are elected, what would you do to promote transportation, infrastructure, and housing projects that address this looming issue of climate crisis? What ideas would you have for Stevens Point that recognizes this reality and works toward a livable future for future generations?"
Well, you've already heard me talk about a few of my ideas. This is a big part of my platform and what calls me to do this service. I'll share some additional ideas to prepare us for the climate that is coming. There are a lot of federal incentives right now, grants, and if we design our infrastructure to spec, a lot of support to have other people pay to help us prepare for the climate that's coming. We should be leveraging all of those dollars so as not to burden locals. We should be investing in preventative infrastructure, rather than hoping to be able to rebuild after catastrophe. That means doing this on the front end before we realize that it's needed. There is really no question it's coming. We need to get ready. We can reduce our carbon footprint within our municipal day-to-day operations, but we can also leverage city staff to create more incentivization of planting shade trees and putting in solar, doing solar group buys. Things like that are things that the city can cooperate on, not just transitioning our buses to lower emissions, right? All towards that goal of getting to zero carbon emission by 2040, something that the League of Conservation voters has recognized and endorsed me for being supportive of. I biked here. You see me biking a lot in the summer. I think there is a lot of opportunity to, within that dense vision of our city that I have, that so many of us have, that there's a lot of opportunity to build a bikeable and walkable city, and I can't wait to get to work on that.
Thank you. Dale Steinmetz.
When it comes to sustainability, I am more passionate than I am knowledgeable. But I think that it's critical that we have a sustainable infrastructure here in Stevens Point, because what's the alternative? Having something that isn't sustainable? By definition, that comes to an end. As a young person who is looking at building and spending their life here, I want to make sure that we have these spaces that are resilient enough to stay with us in the long run. I am, let's see here, I wrote some notes. I think when it comes to addressing these issues, let's not learn from our own mistakes. Let's look at other communities similar to us, figure out what's worked, and copy their best practices. I'm for sustainability, and I'm for listening to the creative solutions that are proposed by industry experts. I want to make sure that the stakeholders have a say in this development, because community input is going to be vital as well.
Okay, thank you. And Craig Tesh.
Yes, first of all, I will say that probably the most important thing as far as our well-being is concerned is sustainability, infrastructure, the planet itself. I've always felt as though we only have one planet, and in here, you only have one city. And so my feeling is that infrastructure, keeping infrastructure up to date, basically, I would have to look though at, when we talk about solar or electric, we have to look at it with the idea that colder climes, there may be more of an effect on it, but that can be studied and worked through, maybe more of a hybrid basis as far as, you know, this area is concerned. But very important, infrastructure, I remember I-35 in Minnesota, I remember when that went down. You don't want to wait until something goes down before you figure out that you should have been working on it. So I think this is the time to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, I'll start with Jackie Guthrie. And in the la, this is an audience question. "In the last three weeks, one pedestrian was killed and another seriously injured by a truck or a van. What should the city be doing to protect the lives of pedestrians?"
Yeah, I'm so sorry for the people impacted by those accidents or by those incidents lately. My heart goes out to them and their families. The city is responsible for designing streets that are safe and implementing those designs in a cost-effective manner. There's a lot of data federally that tells us what safe street design looks like. It turns out that putting a speed limit sign on a really wide road does not lead to people adhering to that speed, but rather tightening up and narrowing roadways helps people drive more slowly and more cautiously. That's just one example of a best practice that we should be adhering to and implementing in our community in service to the safety of bikers, pedestrians, and folks that are trying to move around our community alongside big trucks and other vehicles. I know that change is hard for anyone. I can't imagine trying to implement recycling in the 70s or the smoking ban in the 90s, right? Whenever we change something that people are used to, like a roundabout, for example, gosh, it gets really hard because it's frustrating, and it's hard to learn, and it feels new and different and uncomfortable. It turns out in terms of road design that sometimes discomfort leads to less death. And so I will always support road design that prioritizes safety and low cost over time over something that doesn't change because we're uncomfortable with change.
Thank you. Dale Steinmetz.
It's heartbreaking, the accidents and deaths that have happened recently. And it's unfortunate that it's taken these instances to evaluate our infrastructure situation and look at solutions. situation and look at solutions. Roundabouts slow people down. What kills people? Speed. Let's look at solutions that are appropriate for our community, and let's keep safety as the number one criteria. Cost is important, functionality is important, but safety is paramount. So when we're running these studies and we're looking at the impacts that they have on, that alternatives have on safety, let's actually use that data as the criteria for making decisions, not our gut feelings, not intuition. Let's look at the studies that we're paying for and actually use them, otherwise, what's the point?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tesh, Craig Tesh.
Could you repeat that? I'm at the back forty here, so could you kind of repeat that a little bit?
Sure. I would be glad to. In the last three weeks, one pedestrian was killed and another seriously injured by a truck or van. What should the city be doing to protect the lives of pedestrians?
Thank you. Well, first of all, my first inclination is obviously is we want to do everything that we can, because safety of, of our, the people in, in Stevens Point, of our city, is paramount. But within that, you know, I want to make sure that we aren't making things, making decisions that people have told us are the thing to do, and then it turns out not so much. Here's, here's an example, the roundabout. Do you know we had the, the roundabout here on Fourth and Division that we're talking about right now? But everybody said, well, roundabouts are better, roundabouts are better. But, you know, in the last five years, they've had 150% more, a higher accident rate up at, by, in fact, that's the chief of police said, up at, up at Maria and North Point than they had before. And that's after you had the, after COVID, where at that last five years, there really weren't as many people doing it, and yet it still went up by 150%. So I think that when we talk about safety, we have to, yes, go by the study in the beginning, but then make sure that you watch that to make sure that it is safer. We want to make sure that it's safer for our citizenry.
Okay, thank you. Dustin Boozy.
I think it's tragic that, that this is a discussion we're having. It's tragic for the families affected, friends, loved ones. I think what's been echoed before, and what I'll continue to echo, and what I started with, is, is safety is priority one. Safety isn't based on, you know, how we feel about something. Safety is based on the facts, what we're given, the studies that we pay for. I, I, I find that we, we can tend to, we can pretend to cherry pick things where they, they suit our feelings at times, but when it comes to having facts in front of you that show that, that recommend that show road conditions being safer one way versus another, I think that needs to be prioritized over traffic conditions, over, over everything else. I, I also find too that this can slot nicely into what we've already discussed in, in making cities feel closer, being closer, having multi-use roadways. So prioritizing the ability to have roadways mean something for everyone, not just cars, is something that I truly like to prioritize.
Okay. Thank you. The next one, we'll start with Dale Steinmetz. Relatively few UWSP students vote in local elections. What can the city do to encourage civic engagement and voting among students and young people?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure can. Relatively few UWSP students vote in local elections. What can the city do to encourage civic engagement and voting among students and young people?
I think what UWSP student government and what the Spash Student Senate, I was president of Spash Student Senate, by the way, but what they're doing is critical when it comes to increasing young people's voter engagement. I know these local races aren't quite as flashy as the presidential ones, but when I was living in Oshkosh going to UWO, I would bring people to the polls with me even if I knew that they weren't going to vote my way, just because it's important that people build those habits, that they get involved. I think whether it be putting signs up around campus saying, "Vote this day," the nonpartisan signs, kind of like these organizations, get out there and vote, making sure people are aware of when the voting happens, where your voting place is. It can be a little bit intimidating. My first time voting in Oshkosh, I was like, where do I go? What do I do? What do I bring? Making sure that it's accessible and approachable with the student organizations, or even having faculty bring it up at their lectures. That would be critical. Having transportation to and from, making sure that it isn't too much of a burden to go vote. That'll help lower those barriers, minimize the obstacles, and ultimately, ideally, increase voter turnout.
Okay, thank you. Craig Tesh.
Yes, well, what I remember when I went to school is, it was class, study, and work study. That's basically what I did, and I wasn't thinking that much about voting, I'll be quite honest with you. But it's true that folks, the folks that are going to school, they should, it's, it's hard to realize at that time, but they're affecting their future if they're not voting. And I think another thing is, for people that are, like as an example, I'm in District Two, to come to the people in District Two and, and find out what, what, what they're actually, you know, what are their problems, what are their concerns, and talk to them about them. I think that if, if some politician were actually to go more to some of the schools and talk to them, I think that that would also bolster them as far as, you know, getting on and voting, thinking that this is affecting me. And I, I think I want to be a part of it.
Thank you. Dustin Boozy.
I think you need to have issues that appeal to young, to, to young folks. I think oftentimes, you know, in, in local elections, you do have very specific issues that, that may not be known by, you know, the broader student population. But I like a lot of the ideas that I've heard as far as, you know, providing those clear instructions, providing transportation, making it an, an event. You know, I think what we need to do is increase the, the access, number one, but then ensuring that, you know, it is your civic duty, it is, it is an event, not just a side thing. So providing all of the ancillary needs that you need to get people to the polls, but then also having them feel confident, confident about what they're doing, about who they're casting their vote for, and on the issues that they can recognize.
Okay, thank you. And Jackie Guthrie.
Yeah, I love this question. I hadn't ever thought about the city's role in incentivizing engagement with our student body within the university. I think it's a great idea. When I am talking with students or staff as a part of the university, a lot of them feel like it's this little bubble within the city, and it's totally separate from the city, but our roads run through it and our laws impact it, right? There, it's a lot more intermeshed than I think especially brand-new students might conceptualize of. So when they're going downtown to grab coffee at Ruby's, when they're walking through Schmickly, there are lots of ways that the city government impacts them that they might not realize at first. What I think the city can do is incentivize and normalize participation in city government through appointed roles to increase that cross-pollination of students. So if there were a student-elected government spot that was assigned to vote on different subcommittees within the city, and they would then share with their roommates, right? What's going on with the city? I think we could do a better job of inviting them in, welcoming their perspective, normalize them having a voice in our city discussions to amplify their participation.
Okay, thank you. And this is our last question before we go into our closing statements, and we will start with Mr. Tesh, Craig Tesh. What do you think are the main issues related to the unhoused population in our community? And what ideas do you have to address those issues?
First of all, I will tell you that, that's a good question, because I actually, when I was downtown, when I was running for mayor, I talked to people downtown, and they told me that, you know, people were basically, you know, wandering around, et cetera. And so, you know, I looked into it, and I called a few people. And what they told me is, first of all, that the Salvation Army is at capacity, and the Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church has tried to pick up the slack, but they're running out of room as well. Meals are available at, at Salvation Army, and the Downtown Franciscan provides a, it's like a drop-in center. You just come in from, from noon until three o'clock. But there are large times during the day when people do not have any place to go. And so they end up at the library, they end up at, at Midstate, and I would like to be a part of that. Obviously, I, there are many Vietnam veterans that are homeless, and other veterans as well. My, I actually have a sibling that was homeless. My daughter ran the Salvation Army shelter here in Stevens Point at one time, and she's currently a case manager for the Salvation Army in Madison. So I think I would really look forward to working with that type of, you know, that type of venue.
Okay, thank you. Dustin Boozy.
I think this is a multifaceted issue. Really, we don't, we, we don't have a silver bullet for it. I, I fully believe that, you know, support not only for, for housing, but for all capacities of, of mental health, of, of, you know, nutrition, income. I, I, I fully believe and support that there needs to be a broad coalition where, you know, there, there are support systems in place, but we see that they're, they're lacking at their current capacity. So I, I'd look forward to, you know, bringing a broad group of people together to be able to gather ideas to, I think, right now, we're at a point where we, we acknowledge it, we acknowledge it's an issue, and that, that's, that's something that, in my mind, even only being here for four years, I don't think there was that acknowledgement. But we're at a place now where we can acknowledge and devise a plan with multiple parties involved to move this issue forward.
Thank you. Jackie Guthrie.
My heart hurts for people sleeping outside during even the most mild of Wisconsin winters, whether it's because of substance abuse issues or other life events. I am heartened to see the county and other social services, as well as not-for-profits in our community, coming together to work with individuals that we see and identify as being unhoused. But they're also doing human's work, supporting the very many more unseen unhoused or people lacking housing security in our community that, that are not as evident as we walk around downtown. There are many people that are living on the edge. Human beings are complicated, and there is not one solution or an easy answer, but certainly working together, leveraging those social services, working with them as individuals are all key practices. I will say, I do not support ordinances that make it essentially illegal to exist in public spaces downtown. I don't believe that criminalizing hardship is humane or will lead to actual long-term solutions, either for those individuals or for our community. I do believe that our downtown businesses need our support and that perspectives around safety and going downtown are something to take very seriously as a council. So, but there are best practices to address that, and many communities have been doing that work for decades. So thinking about lighting, police strolls, and late evening events as some of those solutions to make sure that our downtown stays vibrant as we work to help those human beings.
Thank you. And finally, Dale Steinmetz.
I volunteered at the Salvation Army. I grew up with Frame Memorial Presbyterian Church, where I was a youth elder. I know it sounds like an oxymoron, but it's a real title. And I was one of the youth representatives on the ruling body of that church. And the warming shelter that they put on, having cots in the basement, is a great resource for folks. The Salvation Army is a great resource for folks, but it is not enough. The demand for these resources is far outpaced supply. So we need to look at new ideas. We need to find the resources that work well and evaluate, how can we enhance these resources? What can we do? What tools can we put into the hands of the people that live and work in Stevens Point to assist these people in their times of hardship? I agree, criminalizing hardship is not a solution, but there is more that we should be doing to help these folks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your good discussion on these questions. We are now moving into the closing statements, which is an opportunity for the candidates to comment on topics not covered in the questions. The order of the closing statements will be chosen by random drawing once again, and you will have one and a half minutes to present that closing statement. And the first one is Craig Tesh.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank everybody that has been listening. I want to tell you that that's what I've been doing the last couple of months, and I've really enjoyed it. The best part about campaigning is going around, talking to people, giving me their concerns. I have four pages of, of items where people just told me, and little things that people don't think about. One person as an example, they'd like to have a, a sign, a slower, a slow sign, instead of having the 35 mile and then 25, they'd like to have the 25 further back, so by the time they come around the corner, that they're seen. These are little things that people, this is, this is the thing, everybody's talking about the big items that we talked about here, but it's the little things that people see every day in their own lives. That's the thing that is very important. And to me, listening and helping is what I did as a financial planner. And I'm hoping that if I get that opportunity, I can do the same thing for the people in the second district. Thank you very much to everybody for coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Next statement will be by Dustin Boozy.
So I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Thank you everyone for coming and, and listening contently. The questions were great. I, I'm here because I, I believe in local government. I'm proud to say that I live in District 10 in Stevens Point. You know, I'm happy to tell everyone that. My four-year-old daughter, she brims with confidence because she can tell everyone that she lives on Dan's Drive in Stevens Point. Sometimes she gets it wrong and says, "What's up?", but we don't really talk about that as much. The pride and confidence really aren't misplaced, I believe. We have a wonderful neighborhood, we have an excellent city with great amenities. And that being said, though, I believe that there are always new challenges. We've discussed a lot of them tonight, and I want to be part of the solutions. I want to be part of the conduit that gets people to talk about the little things, to talk about the big things. There's always a path forward, there's always a coalition you can build. And I get excited when I get to see loved ones' faces light up and the joy that they get from being fulfilled. And I really, that drives me to bring the experience to others. I, I like to see the excitement, I'd like to see the little things accomplished, the big things accomplished, but those coalitions built, shared, and forging a path forward for Stevens Point. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next one is Jackie Guthrie.
Thank you, Ms. Buck. We have a balance of power in our municipal government between a mayoral position and a council of community members who make time to be informed and to cast votes that shape our community. I am not a civil engineer or an urban planner, but I am a dedicated member of this community, and I look forward to serving my neighbors in this position if elected. I would do so with a curious approach, hoping to learn, to be transparent, and to take the responsibility really seriously, all towards sustaining this vibrant community where we- where we all live. If you live in District Two, I would be honored to earn your vote and serve in this role. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dale Steinmetz.
Stevens Point is my home. I grew up here, I plan on staying here for a long time. I want to make sure that it's vibrant and resilient, I want to make sure that the people of District Six are respected and that they have a say in the development of the city. All these opportunities that are on the horizon, whether that be roundabouts or road redevelopment, sustainability, these hard issues that we're facing, it's going to be important that we get community input from all sorts of stakeholders, so that the development of the city matches the desires of the people that live here. I am running because I have the skills to ask hard questions, to think critically about these issues, and whether that be, you know, the comparisons made at the roundabout on Maria, you know, that's not the same roundabout that was being talked about at Fourth and Division. It's a two-lane, it's by a high school. There's so many false comparisons that are being made, whether it's the water department looking at buying a paver, and, you know, it costs the city $65 per square yard to pave their own roads, those patches. What are we paying now? These questions need to be asked, and if elected alder for District Six, I'll find the answers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the candidates for the time and energy you are investing in running for, to serve as a Stevens Point City Alder, and for participating in this forum. Feel free to stay and talk with constituents in the lobby after this conclusion. On the April 2 ballot, Portage County voters will also be voting for several other offices, including the Presidential Preferential Primary, the Stevens Point Area School District Board, the Portage County Board of Supervisors, the Stevens Point Plover Joint Municipal Judge, and the Stevens Point Area School District Referendum. Also on the ballot are two statewide ballot issues. One prohibits any level of government in the state from applying or accepting nongovernmental funds or equipment for election administration. The other provides that only election officials designated by law may administer elections. The League of Women Voters of Wisconsin has a candidate guide, which may be found at vote411.org, and myvote.wi.gov also provides information about the April 2 elections and the voting process. There's league contact information, including our website, email, and mailing address, available on the league table outside. This concludes the forum for the Stevens Point Alder candidates, so thank you, candidates and audience, for your participation and attention. We also wish to thank Casey Pishak and John Quirk of the City of Stevens Point, who taped this forum, and will replay the forums on the city site on stevenspoint.com/youtube, and also on the Local Access channel. Along with tonight's forum, the Stevens Point Area School District, School Board Candidate Forum, and the Three County Board District Supervisor Forums will also be aired. These broadcasts are an appreciated service to area residents. Thank you to league members, the UWSP Student Government Association, members of the Portage County Business Council, and the SPAS Student Senate, who volunteered in various roles this evening to make the forum possible. We couldn't do it without all of them. And we thank you, the staff of the UWSP Driessis University Center, for their assistance and for the use of this theater. And I do want to mention that Thursday night, we will be at the Lincoln Center for three forums for the county board supervisors. There are 28 people running for 14 districts, and we couldn't, we have to have three forums because we couldn't do all 28 people at once, so please come join us Thursday evening at the Lincoln Center. The league believes that when you vote, you are participating in one of the most basic and important responsibilities you have as a citizen. When you vote, you are empowering your political voice. Please remember to vote on April 2. Your vote does count, and now let us show our appreciation to the candidates, and have